All right, let's call this meeting to order. How's everyone this evening? Okay, all right. If we could, what we'll do is first, this is the Elbert County Planning Commission. It is 7:06. So if we could, all please stand for a prayer and a pledge. And thank you for taking off the hats. First of all, we pray for, we ask Jesus that he answer every one of your prayers and all of your needs and everything else. It's really not an issue to request something about this hearing, but about each one of you. So all of you who have needs, have issues with stuff you're dealing with, please. I hope that your prayers are answered. With that, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, if we could do a roll call, please.
Danny Wilcox.
Here.
Kevin Kirkwood.
Present.
Van Sands.
Here.
Eric Carlson. Eric Carlson. Absent. Mike Buck. Didi Shot Grace.
Present.
Robert Politik.
Here.
John Gresham. That concludes the roll call. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right. Reminder to turn off your cell phones. Okay, thank you all. All right, staff report. Do we have anything?
Yeah, just one item, Mr. Chair. I'm Mark Denrider, Director of Community and Economic Development. You, the planning commission, heard a case back in May. It was for innovative HVAC SUR. If you recall, that was a small home business in a residential area. And the board of county commissioners heard it on June 12th, and they approved it. And I have no other updates for you.
Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda, we, nothing there, correct? All right, thank you. Now, this part of citizen comments, unrelated to any application tonight. So if there's anybody who would like to speak about anything they please? No? Okay. All right, thank you. So we have a, we have a set of meeting minutes. This is for May 21st. So. If we look at them by chance? Okay.
Yes, sir. I move we accept the minutes from May 21st, 2024.
Okay. Second? So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so we'll forego reading them? And we'll approve them? Thank you. All right, now we're gonna go into our public hearing process. We have two. You have two applications tonight, so. And they, they read this statement. This matter requires this body to conduct a quasi judicial hearing, which means the body must find facts and base its decision upon the application of the adopted regulation standards, criteria, and competent substantial and material evidence received during this hearing. However, I'm gonna go over a couple other things. Is that we are a volunteer board. Okay, we've got a couple, we've got a couple applications on the, on the table tonight. And what we do, we actually are a citizens advisory committee. Okay? That enables us, through this group, to actually voice our opinion on things. So what this, this, this says is quasi judicial, we, based on, we're in the same position as you, we can voice our opinion on applications. So, and that happens frequently. On the other hand, the applicant and all the citizens out here who may be, okay, voicing some sort of opinion either here or there on the application, that is your prerogative. Now, what comes out of this committee is only really one thing, is a recommendation. Based on the fact that we are a citizens advisory committee, we can only recommend something. And the three recommendations that we can make are one, recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions. Now what that means, and I'm saying this to kinda, to one, to protect us and to advise all of you that really the information you have or the, the comments you have really need to go to the board because that is where the ultimate decision lies. Okay, and I wanna give you that. And I'll, an example is, we as a board could vote denial across the board. It is still going forward to the B O C C, which has the authority to approve or deny the application. Okay, so that kinda sets the ground rules of where we all are. So first of all, we have to call to order our public hearing, which I am doing at this point. The process is, we will have our CDS department, they will present the application. And after that is completed, then I will ask the applicant to stand up and present anything that they have. Maybe some information, okay, added to what the county has. At that point, once they are completed, then we will go to citizen comments. And what we will try to do is take each and every one of your comments and then refer them back to actual, actually the applicant or CDS to see if he can get an answer. After that's completed, we will then go with our board questions. We'll vote. We'll close down the questions, we'll vote. And as I said, our vote will go one of three ways. So with that, I think the first one we have on tonight is the Gerald rezone. Correct, Mark?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. And who's presenting?
I'll be, I'll be presenting.
All right, Mark, good.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Planning commissioners, fellow citizens, other staff. I'm Mark Denrider, Director of Community and Economic Development. We're here tonight to hear the Gerald rezone case, RZ 23-9401. To advance, there we go. This is a rezone. It's a rezone from agricultural A to residential agricultural RA. And the address of this property is 9400 County Road 7482, Peyton, Colorado 80831. You can see the legal description up there and the details in the slide. The applicant is Levi Gerald, and the owner are Jeremy and Kim Correll. So the process for this case started back in August of 2022. The pre-application meeting. Shortly thereafter, a community meeting followed, and a formal application was submitted in 2023 on August 8th. And here we are, planning commission, June 18th. This case may be familiar to you, given the fact that this did come before you already on May 7th of this year. There was a noticing item that was raised, and it was confirmed and determined that there was an issue, and it was remedied by re-noticing. And that's why this case is going back to you to review again, to ensure that all proper steps were taken. The board of county commissioners are set to hear this June 26th. Here's a location map. You can see the star on the map where it indicates exactly where the property is, right along the border between Elbert County and El Paso County. It's actually, to be more specific, it's about 9.7 miles from the community of Peyton and about 8.1 miles from the community of Elbert. Next, we're gonna look at the zoning map. You can see the subject property there. It is actually currently zoned agricultural. It's in green, as we've mentioned. And you can see most of the land surrounding, especially to the west, is also agricultural. There's also other lands there that are zoned RA. That's residential agriculture or residential agriculture 1. So this proposed rezoning does fit with the general surrounding area. And just to the, the south, you'll, you'll note that is actually the El Paso County border. Here's an aerial map, just gives you another sense of the topography and what this property looks like from the air. The referral response list is here. The rezone application was sent out for two referral periods. The first one took place in August of 2023. That was a three-week referral. And then the second one was underway in February of this year, and that's a two-week referral. And the referral responses that came back were addressed. And here's a continued list of, of those agencies. So it's a mix of internal and external departments and entities that review these land use applications. The applicant has acknowledged and resolved all the, any and all of the comments that were raised during that referral period and the referral process. So when we look at any rezone application, there's a set of criteria that you're gonna find in our Elbert County zoning regulations. It's A through F, so there's six criteria. It's from Article 3C4 in the zoning regs. And we're gonna go through them right now for you. A is whether the proposed rezoning conforms to and is generally consistent with the goals and policies of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. And this proposed rezoning, it does conform with the comp plan, as we call it. Staff does find that the rezone aligns well with general environment policies, basically where it states to safely foster a balance between the natural and the developed environment while still supporting private property rights. And this Gerald rezone, it's really just a simple split of a property into two and will keep the agricultural and rural character of the land and the area. The second item, as it pertains to the criteria for rezones, is whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding land uses. And that actually also aligns well. This is a 13.85 acre parcel. It's being split off from a, an original parcel of 54.46 acres to accommodate a new residence ultimately. In addition, much of the area around the Gerald property is zoned similar, similarly, and it does have that rural character which this property will, to conform to as well. So we believe that this rezone is compatible. Looking at C, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the provision of public services. Elbert County Planning and Elbert County Public Works, Road and Bridge, they've evaluated the rezone application, found that it will have no adverse impact on the provision of public services. D is whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the environment. The rezone will not adversely impact the environment. There are no expected impacts with water. The applicant has taken all appropriate measures to ensure enough water for the properties are in place, and there are no expected impacts to the surrounding properties as it pertains to this. If you look at E, it states whether the proposed rezoning would create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system without improvements. Again, Elbert County Road and Bridge has reviewed. This application has no objections to the rezoning. This is just merely a rezone, creating an agricultural residential plat with minimal, if any, impact on County Road 7482 and will not create any unreasonable traffic or burden the county road system. F, whether the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. This rezone, we believe, will not be detrimental in these areas. The development does conform well with the properties around it, which are larger agricultural properties with residences. Moving along to the findings, Elbert County Planning staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend approval with conditions for this rezone case. And we can go through the conditions now. There are four. The applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days after a decision from the B O C C. Number two, the rezone shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and that the rezone is recorded with the clerk and recorder's office. Number three, recordation of all appropriate documentation. That does have to take place within a period of 180 days of approval by the B O C C. And also, this would be subject to any valid easement or right of way. So those are the conditions. And if you have any questions, let us know. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. The applicant? Yes, sir.
I'm Levi Gerald, the applicant. These are my in-laws, Jeremy and Kim Correll, and my wife Amber Gerald. I don't really have anything to add to what the county said. Just wanted to touch on the reason why we're back here again. Originally, we got a list from the Elbert County Assessors Office, and it just included Elbert County addresses. It didn't have any El Paso County addresses. After the meeting, the county decided that we should include those El Paso County addresses. So we re-
Notification?
Yeah, the notification, yep. So we re-notified both Elbert and El Paso County addresses, and that's why we're here again, so.
Thank you. Do we have any citizen comments on this application? Please, if you could, please state your name, where you live, and then.
Karin Hopper, 9500 County Road 7482.
Okay, and if you could limit it to three minutes?
I will do so.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes and 20 seconds. Thank you for correcting the notification process for this hearing. I appreciate it. The planning staff report dated June 11th, criteria for rezoning approval, Article 3C4, Section E. County staff states Road and Bridge has no objection because there is no burden on the county road system. The criterion actually says burden the existing road system. If the easement road is used for access, there will be a burden on the existing roads system. Attorney Deborah Fortenberry detailed objections with this and other criteria in her May 16th letter. I believe you have the letter. Staff has added a condition for approval number four, subject to valid easements and right of way. My easement is valid, yet nothing has changed in the application. There are two plat maps submitted with this file with no access points shown. The existing Correll driveway is no longer showing on the plat. Is this proper for a rezone application? When is their planned access going to be revealed? The entire Correll property fronts County Road 7482. They have other and better choices for access. I am concerned only with my 60-foot wide easement on the far east side of the property. My easement was deliberately and improperly omitted from the pre-application process forward. Waivers and permits were issued by Elbert County without consideration of my rights over the easement area and without county-required permit applications. The driveway permit application is missing from the file, yet a driveway permit was issued by the county. County staff is still pushing this rezone for approval. My written approval is required per the legal easement document before certain changes to the easement road are made. My approval has never been requested nor granted. Elbert County Planning Department specifies all public comments need to be into them one week prior to your meetings, but they do not post the agenda file and planning staff report until after the one-week deadline is over. This makes it impossible for the public to respond timely to the staff report. Thank you for your consideration of my objections to the approval of this application as submitted.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment. Mark, did you want to address any of those things, or the applicant address any of those? I, this is a rezone, strictly what this, this is. This really doesn't detail, get down into detail on the site plan or anything else? So, Mark, if you could?
Yeah, I, I can just comment. According to county legal, the county does not resolve easement issues, so. This is, this is between other parties. And that's, that's all I can say on it.
And I, and I know we, we don't wanna get into a discussion, but we're in a position to where, really what we're looking at is rezoning the property. That is specifically all we're looking at. And at this point, it would be, you work with the county and the applicant as to egress and legal situations with that property. Okay, that's, that's what I can advise you. Mark, am I correct there?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So I mean, all we're here is to rezon the property from Ag to RA.
So they don't have to show access?
I, ma'am, I don't know. Okay, that is something you have to deal with, with the applicant and the county and the, and the plat and how that's recorded. Okay? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't help you any, any further. All right, with that, do we have any other comments? Yes, if you could, please. That would maybe resolve it in.
So her first complaint was that we don't have access on the plat for the application. I'm not sure where that comes from. The easements on the application plat, a, as well as our driveways, are both on the application plat. So also, those driveways have both been permitted through the county during the building process of our residential home. We also haven't made any changes to the driveway that, that aren't allowed by the, by the easement itself. So those are all, all my comments for those. So it's on the plat, it's been in the application the entire time. And it's never dropped.
Okay. We don't need that here. Literally, we are here to look at the rezoning of the property. That's all we're here for. Okay? So between you three? If you could. Sorry, I can't, I mean, really, we don't, this is not the avenue to take to resolve the issue you have there. All right, with that, so at this point, let's go around the board. Do we have questions here on the, on the board? Go ahead, go through.
Just a real quick question. What was this, to either one, either one of the speakers here? The settlement agreement that was signed on April 12th, what was that in regards to, and why was that signed? Because it doesn't sound like you guys are in any kind of agreement.
It was a valid easement, which it has been validated since April 12th?
Well, he's, he's, he's asking, but the question is, he's asking something that's outside of the, the issue of rezoning, so. I don't wanna get into, but here's the thing, is this is a strict, strictly a rezone. Okay? We don't wanna get into issues between-
I withdraw the question.
Okay, because it, it ends up to be an issue between them.
You're right, it is.
And this is strictly a rezone for us. And I hate to cut people short, but that truly is where we're at. I, I understand, but, ma'am, we're a citizens advisory board. We have no authority whatsoever in changing or adjusting or doing anything with properties. So take that concern, please, to the B O C C. Okay? And take that to CDS and the applicant. Okay, thank you.
None.
None? No, not now?
No.
Okay. All right. So with that, and I know it sounds harsh, but it's a rezone. We're looking at changes from Ag to AR. That's all. Okay, so at this point, do we have anything? Is there any other comments here? Okay, do we have a vote? Do we have a motion? Please?
So, propose a motion to approve with conditions, RZ-23-9401.
Okay, do we have a second?
All right, thanks.
There you go, man.
I'll get real close here.
Okay.
We can't approve anything. We will recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Yeah, to the.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
That's second to, yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you get those over there? Thank you. So, do we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Are we, do we need to go around the board? No. Okay. All right. With that, it's unanimous approval of the rezone. And ma'am, I tell you, please take your concerns a little further, okay? Okay, thank you. That? Thank you all. And now we are on to the next application. I think the next application is the service plan for Spring Valley Metro District number five. Hoping we do them together. So we don't have to go through listening to both. Right? Okay, yeah. I was hoping we'd include them both, so. How are you? Send out the crowd a little, so what we're hearing, and I hope, Mark, can we do both? The amended and restated service plans, number five and number seven. Are we able to do those both?
Yes, you can do those together.
Okay, all right. Okay, with that, CDS and, sir, I don't remember your- Okay, with that, C D S and, sir, I don't remember your name.
It's Graham Anderson, Mr. Chair.
Graham Anderson, okay, thank you. Anderson Analytics.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right, if that, please.
All right. Mr. Chair, Mark Denreter again. I'm going to actually do a general preview from the staff side, and then I'll hand it off to Graham. Would you like us to begin?
Please.
Okay, thank you. So, we're here to present to you the Spring Valley Ranch Metropolitan District Number Five amended and restated service plan, and then a new District Number Seven service plan for Spring Valley Ranch. Again, this is just, you know, a request for approval of just one amended and restated service plan, and then also approval, recommended approval for one new Metro District service plan, which would be Number Seven. And the details of this particular case, we have a landowner, Spring Valley Land Investments LLC. The applicant representative is McGee Dee Betcher, P C. And the location of this particular site is, you can see here on the map, this is the northwest corner, in a sense, of the county. On the bottom left, you'll see the town of Elizabeth, and then Kiowa is out to the east, and then just go more or less due north of Elizabeth, and you see the star, and then that's the Spring Valley Ranch area. And this is actually, this particular piece is just on the east side of County Road 13 and then north of County Road 174. You can see that here on this next slide as we zoom in on it. The existing zoning is a planned unit development, and it's a P U D for single-family residential and commercial as well. The process for any service plan for Metro Districts, same as many other land use applications, we go through the Planning Commission and then the Board of County Commissioners. Here are the hearing dates listed for you. Obviously, we're here tonight for P C, and later in July, we'll hear, the B O C C will hear it. And referral processes, this, we go to two. One, we send it out to Butler Snow to get a legal analysis. They evaluate the statutory requirements, and then, of course, we have folks like Graham from Anderson Analytics, and they do more of the financial review and to review the, just take a real broad, and they do dive deep into it as well, and look at these proposals for the financial standards as it apply pertains to Metro Districts. And then on the zoning regulations side of it, there are a list of review criteria, Article X V I D. In our zoning regs, it states that service plan applications should be reviewed using the criteria out of Colorado revised statutes. So, this is state law, and it says that Board of County Commissioners, they shall disapprove the service plan unless evidence satisfactory to the board of each of the following is presented. So, I'll go through these quickly here. A, is there a sufficient existing and projected need for organized service in the area to be serviced by the proposed special district? B, the existing service in the area to be served by the proposed special district is inadequate for present and projected needs. Moving along to C, the proposed special district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within its proposed boundaries. D, the area to be included in the proposed special district has or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. Also, in state statute, the Board of County Commissioners shall consider five additional items, and the B O C C may disapprove if evidence of the following is not presented. So, we have A, is adequate service is not or will not be available to the area through the county or other existing municipal or quasi-municipal corporations, including existing special districts within a reasonable time and on a comparable basis. B, the facility and service standards of the proposed special district are compatible with the facility and service standards of each county within the proposed special district is to be located in each municipality which is an interested party under Section 32-1-2041. C, the proposal is in substantial compliance with a master plan adopted pursuant to Section 30-28-106 CRS, that's Colorado Revised Statutes. D, the proposal is in compliance with any duly adopted county, regional, or state long-range water quality management plan for the area. E, the creation of the special district will be in the best interest of the area proposed to be served. So, we arrive at our findings, and our department does recommend that the Planning Commission find the following. There are actually 10 findings, so bear with me here, I'll just run through them. One, there is sufficient existing and projected need for organized service in the area to be serviced by the districts. And two, the existing service in the area to be served by the district is inadequate for present and projected needs. And number three, the districts are capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within their proposed boundaries. And number four, the proposal is compatible with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area. And number five, the area to be included in the districts does not or does have or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. And six, adequate service is not or will not be available to the area through the county or other existing municipal or quasi-municipal corporations, including special districts within a reasonable time and on a comparable basis. And we go to number seven, the facility and service standards of the districts are compatible with the facility and service standards of the county within which the districts are located, and each municipality which is in an interested party under Section 32-1-2041 CRS. And eight, the proposal is in compliance with a master plan adopted pursuant to Section 30-28-106 CRS. Number nine, the proposal is in compliance with any duly adopted county, regional, or state long-range water quality management plan for the area. And 10, the creation of the districts will be in the best interest of the proposed area to be served. So, the recommendation with all that is we, Elbert County Government Planning Department, we recommend that the Planning Commission does recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for Spring Valley Ranch District Five amended and restated service plan and the new District Seven service plan. So, appreciate it. Now, we're going to have Graham Anderson from Anderson Analytics present as our staff consultant on this application, and Graham's going to focus, again, on the financial standards of this plan. Thank you, Graham.
Thank you very much. Again, Graham Anderson with Anderson Analytics, 1516 North Nevada, Colorado Springs, Colorado. It's really lovely to be here in summertime. I realized I've only been here in the dead of winter, and one of these times, I'm going to get the Butler Snow team to actually do the presentation, but as you can see, I've yet to win that fight. So, rather luckily, this is a fairly short presentation here, and I get to avoid ideally some of the heavy bond math here. I'm going to start out with some geography. So, what we're looking at here with the proposed Second Amendment to Metro District Number Five, you can see Metro District Number Five in the northwest part, northwest of 174 and 17 in blue there. That's the remaining undeveloped district in the Spring Valley community and the Spring Valley districts. Just a quick overview of the existing districts. I'll start with Number Two in pink there in the far southeast. One and two were the original districts. Number Two issued bonds in 2005, 2006, 2007. They underwent what we've talked about before, refunding and new money, and they're underway with an additional phase, different planning area up in the northeast. Moving over to the green, District Number Three, they issued bonds in January of 2020. You're probably familiar, it's really substantially built out now, homes being sold, people moving in. Comparing it to the bond offering statement appears, timing-wise, to be well on track. District Number Six, the orange in there as well, next to District Number Three, issued bonds in January of 2022, at least as of the most recent reassessment date. Plating, substantial site work, putting infrastructure in place, I would defer to the applicant in terms of precise timing there in terms of going vertical and selling homes. And then moving up to the northwest, District Number Four, bonds issued in August of 2020. Again, substantial vertical delivery, units being sold and occupied, and again, appears to be well on track in comparison to the absorption forecast. And then finally, District Number One, that's the coordinating district. It's a small parcel, I believe, located in the golf course area. Districts Two through Six have entered into a facilities funding, construction, and operations agreement with District Number One. So, District Number One basically owns, operates, and is responsible for constructing, delivering the public improvements generally throughout the Spring Valley community. And then the other districts, Districts Two through Six and the proposed District Number Seven presumably are responsible for funding the construction of those improvements, as well as for funding the operations of the infrastructure throughout the community via that agreement between District One and Districts Two through Six. So, zooming in up here to the northwest part, I should probably note, northwest of 17 and 174, that's in Douglas County School District. The remainder of the Spring Valley districts are in Elizabeth School District. If you just take a mental image of this and we flip over here, this is really the basic proposal here. This is the proposed amendment to create an additional district out of the remaining undeveloped district, kind of crack District Number Five into two districts, fundamentally, essentially to allow for flexibility in future phasing as well as bond issuances for this remaining undeveloped area. As I mentioned before, that's really the only proposed material modification to the Spring Valley districts and the Spring Valley approvals. The total anticipated development for the new districts numbers Five through Seven, again, the same areas as the current District Five, remains substantially the same, 323 units indicated in the financial plan, as in the prior financial plan for the current District Number Five, which had indicated 328 single-family units. No new or additional service plan debt authorization for the Spring Valley districts beyond what has already been approved, and no other material modifications, again, to what has already been approved for the Spring Valley Metro Districts. Just an overview of what those existing service plan approvals or powers are for Spring Valley Number Five. Spring Valley Four, Five, and Six are essentially clones of each other in terms of the service plan language, and Spring Valley Seven would also essentially be a clone of Four, Five, and Six. So, the service plan debt limit is aggregate 250 million among all districts numbers One through Six. So, what's proposed here is that any bonds issued by the proposed District Number Seven would count towards that existing aggregate limit. In other words, it becomes an aggregate service plan debt limit among districts numbers One through Seven instead of districts number One through Six. The maximum debt mill levy for this district, as well as for Four and Six and proposed Number Seven, is 65 mils. Again, as you've seen before, adjustable for changes in the method of calculating assessed value. The base year in that service plan language was 65 mils at the 7.2% residential assessment rate and the 29% non-residential assessment rate. I believe that was tax year 2017 and 2018. And so, I've given you an example illustration, again, of how that max debt levy gets adjusted for changes in assessment rates and whatnot. I've adjusted that for the current 6.7% assessment rate. What I have not illustrated here as well for tax year 23, and now with Senate Bill 233 and tax year 24, there are also those $55,000 market value exemptions. That presumably could also be included in that adjustment, but that would not be simple to try to illustrate here. Finally, the debt levy for this district on the other districts, you've seen this for other Metro Districts in Elbert County before as well, it's authorized for what's called limited convertible to unlimited. Technically, that means that the debt levy may be adjusted higher if necessary to make required bond payments if, for once, outstanding, bond total is less than 50% of the district's total assessed value. What that means in practice usually is that that conversion couldn't happen until kind of after year 2022, 23 in a 30-year bond plan, or if you have a very small bond issuance in relation to the total tax base in the district as well, that could potentially be convertible. And then finally, the operations and maintenance levy for this district, as well as for the other Spring Valley, there is no service plan levy cap. I'll illustrate what the operations and maintenance levies are in the next slide. Service plan history for Spring Valley Number Five, it was established in the February 2020 service plan approvals that amended the existing District Number Four and created District Number Five and Number Six, and it also established that 250 million aggregate debt limit. And then, reason why for Spring Valley Number Five, it's the second amended service plan, is that in May of 2021, there was a minor technical amendment to Districts Number Four and Six. Really, it's just correcting or clarifying some technical language in one sentence in all of those service plans. I don't want to step on the toes of Bond Council, but frankly, it kind of seemed like a Bond Council type of amendment, just to kind of remove some potential legal ambiguity there. And then finally, what's being proposed here, creating an additional district out of the existing areas. There is precedent for this occurring in the Spring Valley districts in 2000... In 2001, it started with districts Number One and Two in the entire existing area. Then in 2004 and 2005, Number Three and Number Four were created out of the existing boundaries. And then again, it occurred in 2020, numbers Five and Six were created or redrawn from the existing Spring Valley boundaries. I've summarized here, just for context, in terms of the mill levies, the tax year 23, so payable this year, mill levies for the other Spring Valley districts. Spring Valley Two, Spring Valley Three, they have older service plan language. I believe their base year is back when the residential rate was 9% or something. So it's, I believe, 50 or 55 adjustable for that. But you can see that the bond levies for all of the districts are pretty close to each other. And finally, for tax year 23, payable 24, the operations and maintenance levy for all of the districts have been established and certified at the same rate, going back to the agreement with District Number One along, between Two and Six and District Number One. Each of those districts transfers 9.74 of those mils for public improvement and maintenance and operations throughout Spring Valley. And then the remainder is really for admin of each of those respective districts. And then finally, I've indicated, because we often look at this in context with special district mill levy, the HOA fees and the respective communities. I did pull those from recent housing listings. So that's not necessarily absolutely up to date, but that is illustrative there. Illustrative mill levy for District Number Five and the proposed District Number Seven. I've indicated it's in Douglas County School District. I believe that means that it is also not in Elizabeth Park and Rec District. Elbert County mill levy, of course, I believe the county lowered its mill levy by four mils or so this year. And Rattlesnake Fire Protection District. And again, just illustrative because these mill levies are adjustable or could change in the future, at least the operations and maintenance levy. But illustrative, 166.68 mils at that maximum bond levy with that tax year 23 residential adjustment that I showed in several slides before. There's no change to the current mill levy authorization for District Number Five, so that's not really a question on the table. District Number Five already has this mill levy authorization. I do this for you always as well, illustrative property tax. I've shown here a home with an average market value of $525,000 because that's what's shown in the financial plans for districts Number Five and Seven. So the other taxing entities, counties, school, library, fire protection district, about 84 mils, about $2,600. And then the special district mill levy for Spring Valley at that maximum bond levy is also about $2,600. Also consider, you know, potentially an HOA fee here. That's outside of the boundaries of metro districts. But bottom line, there is an illustrative total property tax and HOA. So financial plan review. Luckily, I can kind of spare you some of the bond math this time and kind of look at this at a higher fundamental build-out level. No new service plan debt authorization is being requested or proposed. There's no change in the aggregate service plan debt limit for the Spring Valley districts that was approved in the February 2020 service plans. So the proposed financial plans for districts Five and Seven show total anticipated development for that area, which is substantially identical to that, which was shown in the prior approved financial plan at 328 homes versus 323 homes. And today, home market values are higher. They've appreciated more than what was assumed and shown in the prior approved financial plan in February 2020. So just looking at this fundamentally, the fundamental bond financing capacity for the proposed districts Five and Seven is essentially equal to or perhaps greater than what was demonstrated in the financial plan for the prior service plan approvals. On the left, I've summarized the build-out and the values that were shown in the prior financial plan approvals from February 2020. 325 homes at a market value assumed in 2019, $450,000. That prior financial plan assumed 2% annual inflation in those market values until delivery. And then over on the right-hand side, I've broken out what's shown in Number Five and Number Seven. 160 single-family units shown in the financial plan for the amended Number Five. 163 units shown in the proposed Number Seven. And the assumed market value, which aligns with current valuations and transaction prices for the surrounding districts. Around District Number Five is at $525,000. Again, that financial plan assumes 2% annual inflation in that market value until delivery. I guess I should go back to that prior financial plan. That prior financial plan also showed three custom home sites there. That's not shown in the proposed financial plans for Number Five and Number Seven. This is kind of reiterating what I've said before. I did want to note that recent home sales in District Number Three and District Number Six have ranged from about $490,000 to almost $600,000. And just a quick check of current listings, there are current listings in... Actually, I take that back. That should refer to Number Three and Number Four, I apologize there. But current listings up to about $640,000. I've shown this graph to you before in terms of of single-family home value appreciation history. Average annual appreciation in Elbert County of single-family homes over the past 10 years through January 1st of 2023, 8.3% annually, 20-year, 4.2%, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to go into much depth here, but this is kind of a summary matrix of the proposed financial plans, the bond plans that are shown in this application. The bond parameters, the assumed coupon rates, the assumed underwritten rate of appreciation, the whole structure here, the 40-year refunding and new money structure. Those parameters are the same as what was shown in the prior financial plan approvals. If you look at the top line, par amount of bonds shown, total of about 45.835 million par amount of bonds shown issued in the financial plans. And then kind of a key takeaway here is the one highlighted in gray there, net proceeds from the bonds after bond issuance costs and reserve requirements, a total of just over 28 million in net proceeds available for eligible costs. Again, this is kind of an off-the-shelf structure for purposes of showing a numerical plan here. In reality, there are a lot of potential efficiencies there in terms of yielding greater net proceeds in relation to the debt issued here. So just again, this is the last slide that I have for you. So the proposed financial plans have updated build-out phasing with the two districts, updated the market values to reflect current market conditions, which are higher than what was assumed in the February 2020 service plans. The structure here shown again is an effective bond financing term of 40 years with refunding and new money, refunding the first bond series 10 years after. Those were issued with another 30-year series. And the bond coupon rates on the initial unrated 5% of 1.0x coverage. It does show full capitalized interest, 6% biennial market value inflation after delivery. There is also shown, and I believe this was a component of the other bond issuances for the Spring Valley districts, a TAP fee just over $16,000 per unit or per lot, as well as facility fee just under $4,000. Again, that would be paid by the builder or the developer at construction, so it kind of gets capitalized into the cost of the home. It kind of gets capitalized into the price that the developer can sell the lots to the home builders at as well. So I think I can conclude my presentation right now. This is what I have for you, and I've ideally avoided some heavy math this time.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have anybody else? Is there anybody else who'd present, the applicant-wise?
Mr. Marshall. How are you?
Fine. There's a lot of information there, a lot more detail than we're used to seeing, that's for sure. I think what I'd like to do is just explain real briefly why we're doing this, number one, and then number two. Just an overview of, this was a lot of detail. Don't see this typically anywhere. The bottom line is, the reason we're doing it is we're dividing one existing district into two. The purpose for it is, we're going to have two different builders, two different products. I like to actually match my communities up with my bonds. We will probably end up not with not as much capitalized interest, which is a benefit to the homeowners at the end of the day and the developer. So it's a simple, it was a very simple request to just take in one existing district and divide it into two. I can assure you that when we issue bonds, I've been doing this for 34 years and probably have done close to half a billion dollars in bond deals. And we, my team at least, and my philosophy is, I try to wait until it makes sense to issue my bonds. And I try to wait until my builders are actually building homes, number one. And number two, if I can afford to, I try to wait till interest rates look like they're a little more favorable than they might be right now today. So, and we don't know, you don't know where it's going. But the other thing I want to say about service plans is, the service plan, basically, what it does is it creates the boundaries for the district and it creates the, you know, it takes into account all of the statutes and all the regulations that we have to follow. The finance plan that's included in the service plan is a model service plan. It's probably not going to be exactly the parameters that will be out there when we issue the debt. But again, we will do the very best we can to make sure we get the best conditions that we can at the time. So that, a lot of, there's a lot of detail in there. I'm happy to answer any questions that everybody, anybody has. I know there's, there was a lot of detail in that presentation and a lot of good information for people that want to dig into it. I had a few things that passed my mind as we were going through it and then comments were made, but, or that some of the positions were stated. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. It's relatively simple. One of the things I do want to point out, and I think most of you probably know, the county does not provide water and sewer service, period, anywhere. We were the first, besides the town of Elizabeth and the town of Kiowa, we were the first improvement district to actually go out and build a wastewater treatment plant and a water treatment plant. We are in the process right now of building our reuse water system. Graham referenced our TAP fees. The TAP fees have not changed in about 10 years. They probably are going to change because we are going to implement our reuse water into our, we're going to introduce it back into our, we're going to... The state of Colorado last year passed legislation that is going to allow us to take reuse water and put it back into our potable water system. And that's, that's new for Colorado, but it's not new for other parts of the country. The technology's out there. We are discussing it with several consultants right now, both in-state and out-of-state. It's very, very doable. There's an education process for sure. But if we can get our reuse water back into our potable water system, we should be able to reuse about 80% of our water, which is huge. And I'm also on that water task force right now. We're going through the whole updated study right now to figure out how much water might be in the aquifers out here. What I can tell you from my experience out here, and I've been working in Elbert County for 24 years now, is we are in the deepest part of the aquifers. We're at the, if you think of it as a sink basin, we're in the middle. So the drain is as far down as it can possibly be. When you go in, and when you get up into Adams County, up into Bennett and places like that, they're on the fringe. The Denver Aquifer up there sucks. It's a technical term. Down here, it's good. So we've got a lot of water here in Elbert County. And hopefully, this group that I'm involved in and Mark's on that cheering it. Hopefully, we can prove to everybody that there is plenty of water down here for quite some time. But I think the renewable, the reuse water is going to be huge. And we, I've instructed my team to, we want to be one of the groups at the forefront here. There's government grants apparently available to do some of this stuff. And we want to see if we can get it all done at Spring Valley. So back to the service plan and splitting our district. We are, every district has homes in it except for these two districts. The District Three is built out. It's completely built out at this point. District Two still has a couple hundred, 240 homes left. The good news about District Two, which was our first bonding district, is when we modeled that bond back in 2004, the average home price was about $275,000. So our assessed valuation, although we haven't built out the district, our AV is way ahead of schedule. And we will, we've refunded a good chunk of those bonds already. And when we refunded the first tranche, my interest rate was slightly below 2%, double tax exempt. I mean, you just don't get those kind of rates. And we've been able to lower mill levies in a lot of our districts around the metropolitan area over the years as we refund and build out. So there's a lot of negative press out there on metro districts. You know, there's been a few journalists that like to really make things look really bad. But generally speaking, districts work really well. And they build infrastructure that the municipalities can't build and won't build. And if you want to live in a nice community with running water and toilets that flush and roads and parks and stuff like that, we need metro districts. That's what they're there for. So I really don't have much else to say. I could go on forever, but I can tell you guys are pretty enamored with this whole topic. But I'll cut my comments short.
Thank you, thank you. At this point, Jim, what we'll do is we'll go to public comment. And maybe there will be some questions. We'll see who we have.
One or two other things. There are no homeowners that live in these districts today, either current or proposed. And secondly, it is Douglas County School Districts out there. And we did donate a 25-acre school site to Douglas County.
Yes? Did it take, pardon me? Really?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let's take a break. We got to take a five, 10-minute break, okay? Can we do that? And then we'll come back to public comment. So if... So, if we could, let's pick it up in a couple minutes, all right? Well, did he? Okay. All right. Well, I'll take advantage of it. Okay. Okay. And we'll figure it out. All right. We were, we just recessed. What's that? Okay. Okay. All right. Took a break. We're back. All right. Now, we're at the citizen comment portion. So, if we could, I think we have, I have two people on this list. One is Karen Hopper.
She already talked.
Already talked. All right. And we have James Vasquez. That was the first application for the Jared Rezone. Okay. So, we have James Vasquez? I think they left because I think they are in the wrong county.
No.
I'm not sure, but okay.
We all know it's just D U's fault.
It's just D U's fault.
Okay. So, at this point, do we have any other public comment? No? All right. So, we will close public comment at this point. And what we'll do is we'll go around the room, around the board, and ask for questions here. So...
I have no question.
No question.
No questions.
I have no questions.
I couldn't do without having a question. Sorry. As we're looking at this, I looked at the plan. I was thinking, okay, so you're basically taking a chunk out of one and moving it into a, or making a new one out of an old one. Making two out of one. Did you adjust the financial plan associated with that? Is it still the initial target? And I saw the plan start from 2001 and now goes through 2068. Did we adjust the financial plan for all of those years? And that was part of what I saw in Graham's presentation. I think it was on Slide Seven. As we're looking at that, did that change any? Or is it still part and parcel of the original plan, just moving things around?
Yeah. Your mind, thank you.
You're still not on.
Please be green.
Here we go.
Hey, there we go.
We obviously got a copy of Graham's report. And we, one of my, I think it was Shelby actually contacted you. And we did make some adjustments to some of the stuff that he had asked for. Again, the finance plan that is in the service plan is nothing more than a model. We only have 323 lots that are getting divided into these two districts. So, District Five is going to be 160 lots. And District Seven will be 163 lots for a total of 323. So, there, when we actually go to issue debt on those districts, it'll be based on those homes, the estimated property value that we feel that we're going to achieve based on the current market conditions at that time. And then, obviously, we, the finance plan we actually use to issue the bonds will reflect market conditions at that time. We're, the way the process works, and again, we're getting into a lot of detail that normally we wouldn't. But we put our finance plans together based on what our underwriters tell us the market is and what they think we can get. So, they'll direct us. And then they actually go to the market. And they shop our bonds. And our bonds get shopped across the country. Their, Nuveen is a huge buyer of our bonds. Envesco is a huge buyer of our bonds. And it can get competitive, so...
I get that. I'm just, I just wanted to know whether you changed the financial plan.
We made the modifications we were asked to. And we did show the new lot counts, that type of stuff.
It's not an increase in lot counts. You just split, split the existing...
We, that would be a rezoning. That would be a rezoning. We took the 323 lots that we're zoned for. And we, 160 are in District Five and 163 are in District Seven.
Just a comment on the tap fees. I was like, that's damn cheap.
Well, they're soup, well, no, you're right. They are. We haven't raised those tap fees in almost 10 years. And we keep doing studies. And the studies keep coming back and telling us that we don't have any financial basis to increase them. And part of it is because our system was built several years ago at a much lower cost than it is today. But with what's going on and with reuse water and some of the stuff we're going to want and do in the future, I do think we'll be able to increase our tap fees. Our tap fees are way below the Town of Parker, way below Cassaroc, way below Independence. But again, a lot of it has to do with the fact that our cost to develop, you know, we built our base treatment plant back in 2004. That plant today would cost me three or four times more than it did in 2004. The costs have gone through the roof.
I also saw that we're shipping about $400,000 a year to Douglas County or the school district from that mill levy for them.
Yeah, I don't remember what their mill levy is, but they...
Or 45%.
Forty-five mills. So, they will get 45 mills on every, on every, every dollar.
That hurts from a county perspective.
Well, that's not Elizabeth School District up there, though. Everything else is. Districts Four, Five, Four, Five, and Seven are all in Douglas County. Everything else is in Elizabeth. I...
We keep losing opportunities.
I have no idea how that ever happened. I don't know how that happened.
And the...
Do you know, Danny?
I do, but I'm not giving it to you.
Yeah, it's not for tonight.
The 25 acres that you donated...
It was established and everything else, but I'm not...
The 25 acres that you donated is in Elbert County, right?
It's located in Elbert County. It's located right in the middle of, between filing, those are, that's filing Five and filing 10 up in those districts. And it's kind of in the heart of them. And the school district felt that they wanted land as opposed to fees. So, we donated the land. Now, they're also experiencing declining enrollment right now in a lot of parts of Douglas County. So, they really don't need a new school. They need to figure out how to fill the schools that are starting to be, they're starting to experience declining enrollment in. So, it's going to be interesting.
And the other question I have is the rates seem to be flat year over year. And do you do a cost adjustment based on the future cost?
Yeah, we do inflationary cost increases on operational costs. Because we operate the Water and Sewer District and the Water and Sewer Services, our homeowners do pay a monthly user fee. And it's based on, there's a flat fee. And our water's just like everywhere else. You know, there's a flat fee. And then, depending on how much you use, if you decide you're going to use 50,000 gallons a day to water your lawn, you're going to pay for it. So, we have a sliding scale that goes from about $2,000 up to about $15,000.
Yeah, I'm actually not looking at that. I'm looking at, your bond rates stay flat year over year.
Oh, yeah.
Cost of money means that the 250 million that you originally asked for should be somewhere in the neighborhood of 750 million by 2068.
Well, we're, first of all, the 250 million is a blanket number. We won't issue anywhere near 250 million. But that includes debt service and some other things, yeah.
And is that debt service carried, or that plan carried across one through seven? Or is it, is it weighted for each one of the new...
It's an aggregate number. Graham mentioned that it was aggregate. And...
Sorry, it was just, that's a big word for me.
It's a big one for me, too. I, no, we, our districts, District Number Two, which was our first district, is 600 and, we have, I think, 668 homes roughly that'll be built in that. And we started that in 2005 when the market was actually going pretty well. And then, all of a sudden, we all learned that 2007, 8, 9, 10, and 11 was going to be a different thing. And, you know, nobody really saw that coming, the way it came. Not very many people did. And what it did, though, is it taught us some lessons. You know, I don't want big districts anymore. I want smaller districts. I want it more manageable. I want to match incomes with expenses. And I will never do another district that big again, ever. But, you know, once you've done it, you can't undo it. And it's, and I mentioned earlier, it's worked out quite well, actually, for everybody, including the homeowners. Because the AV, the SS valuation on the average home out there is at least two and a half, three times what we had initially projected. And the new homes, right now, one of the builders is starting their homes. They've got, they've got about 10 homes in the ground up in what we call filing six, I guess that is. And they're starting in the $650,000 to $700,000 range. So, I mean, those AVs are way more than we would have ever expected back in 2004 or '05. Same thing in District...
And the last easy question I have is we're feeding a lot of money or feeding a lot of mills back into District One. Is District One more of a service?
District One, we call it the operations district. And that's exactly what it is. Everything, everything goes into, all the revenues end up in District One to provide the services, to maintain things. And one of the other things that didn't come out tonight, but several, not that many years ago, the county came along. And I don't know if Danny was a county commissioner. I think he was.
It was probably his fault.
I think, I think, I'm going to blame Danny tonight.
Danny Alex, yeah.
Yeah. But no, anyways, the county, the county was maintaining, the county was accepting our roads for maintenance. And they passed an ordinance that basically said we're only going to accept certain roads. And they had to be kind of primary roads. They couldn't be a cul-de-sac. It couldn't be a circle. It couldn't be, and, you know, at first, I was a little bit frustrated with it. But then, I realized that the plows that you guys have out here, I don't want your plows on my roads, anyway. You're going to destroy them. So, I, we worked some stuff out and we moved forward. But we, one thing we have done is we've, we have created operating reserve fees that we charge the builders when they pull a permit to help us maintain the roads and maintain the Water and Sewer Services.
Perfect. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Lot of detail.
Other people?
I am, like I said earlier, I've been doing this a long time. And I'm kind of at the forefront of a lot of things. And I'm definitely at the forefront of this. I've been, I've met with our wastewater consultants. I've got a group out of California that I'm consulting with right now. And we're going to figure this out.
Well, I put my first reuse system in many years ago. Laundry up in Boulder. They were wasting water. And we started reusing the water. And they sold the place for millions more.
No, it's a, it's a big deal. And, you know, Colorado, we gotta, we gotta be paying attention. We know there's lots of water in our aquifers, but that doesn't mean we should be throwing it away and abusing it.
Hey.
Connor Rudden. Any more questions?
All right. Call for a vote. Can I have a motion? What do we got? Can you show the numbers, Mark, please?
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. What was the request?
I only show Spring Valley Ranch Metropolitan District Number Five amended and restated service plan. Number seven. That's all I show. Is there any specific number?
Yeah. I mean, so, we're basically looking at, one moment. So, this should be a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for Spring Valley Ranch District Five amended and restated service plan and the new District Seven service plan.
Okay. That's what I showed. So, can I have a motion to that effect?
So, I'd make, I'd make a motion to recommend approval for Spring Valley Metro District Five amended and restated service plan and Spring Valley Metro District Number Seven service plan for metro districts.
Okay. And you got a second? You got that? Dee, you got, great. Dee Dee was the second? All right. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I hear...
Everybody.
Everybody unanimous, correct? Show unanimous vote. All right. At this point, let's see, do we have work session? We have nothing scheduled for that, correct? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I make a motion that we adjourn for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.